The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
I predict prematurely that there will be a surplus this year. Next year, you're going to have a chore. But it's this year, you're going to be fine, and that's fine. My last comments is I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the courtesies you've extended to me for the past years. You know, it's obviously in a position like mine, we're not always going to be in agreement, but you and I have had some great conversations, and I think that this city is very fortunate to have you in the lead as the chair. For all these years, you've made great decisions. It was a pleasure working with you, and I'd like to get the same accolade to the mayor. Believe me, on the presentation, as the tours that we took, I mean, you exceeded my expectations, and your understanding of the businesses and the principles of those and the different neighborhoods and everything was outstanding, and it assisted to reaffirm the ratings. And thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And thank you, everyone else. John, I really enjoyed working with you through the years. I don't know how you do with all the committees that you're on. It's really absolutely amazing. I wish I could follow in your footsteps, but I'm sorry, I don't want any more night meetings. So with everyone, you know, I said I'd do, but I'll always be around. The mayor has asked me to attend, you know, what's that movie? They Pull You Back In? He's asked me to attend, is it Wednesday, the 20th?
Yes, to join point meeting.
To talk about the financing of the Memorial Boulevard. I've contacted our financial advisor, Matt Spurdo, who went with us on the presentation tours. I've given him instructions for various levels of debt service and size and structure, and I'll be prepared to address your questions with regards to financing. So we'll look forward to seeing you one last time, and I hope you won't mind. I'll be in street clothes.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have one. You wouldn't want me to not question you on your very last meeting.
I'm going to miss you. You know that?
(laughing) I want to do, I do want to thank you for providing the legal bills the way I asked several months ago, so for the last months that you've been doing it.
Sure.
And I would request that you ask your successor, Diane Waldron, to continue to provide them to us. I'd appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, without question.
And in terms of this month, the only additions to the bills that I've been looking at are $1,665 for the attorneys that are defending the claims against the mayor, and $1,675 for the ombudsman. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. And I'll speak with Diane before I leave about this, because one of my staff members prepares the report, so I'll bring her in the office, and we'll discuss it, and we'll continue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Glenn, I'd just like to thank you for all your hard work and everything you've done. I think you've done a great job here. And I wish you would sing two bars of My Way. I mean, because you do have a great voice.
Regrets. I've had a few, but then again, too few to mention.
All right, very good. You do have a very good voice.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we heard that, we heard him singing at his retirement party.
Yeah, we did that, you know, because everything's not always peaches and creams. There are regrets at times, but they were too few to mention, and I'm very proud to have been a part of this organization, and I look forward to reading about it in the next year to come with all the different things that you're doing. I'm getting the Bristol Press for at least a year, and I'll look forward to reading about you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Take care, everyone. Any other business?
Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion main, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Council meeting will start in four minutes. Ask for a moment of silence for the troops on active duty. Thank you. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on May 9, 2017, and the special city council meetings on May 3, 2017, and May 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes. Item number three is public participation. Jerry Turnowski, name and address for the record, please.
75 Princeton Drive, Bristol, Connecticut.
You're up.
The reason why I'm here is I was the unfortunate recipient of a Burlington Housing Project, and you, Mr. Mayor, have been at my house before with the bad (inaudible).
Yes, okay, I remember now, yep, on the left.
And actually, I brought some pictures I like to show. I actually emailed you, and I never got a response.
Recently?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Which makes me want to come here, so if I could.
Yeah.
Pass it down.
Thank you, sir.
The developer of this was, of that project, was the one that was supposed to take care of all my property, and somehow the city got involved, and it's been a disaster. I've been reseeded, hydroseeded five times. The last batch that we agreed on was the worst, and the pictures will show the rocks. I mean, the first batch actually had hypodermic needles and glass in it, and that was from the city. So what I'm asking for is something very simple. I want eight yards of loom from a place of my choice, and all the seed and fertilizer from a retail store of the city's choice. I will do the work, and then I'll sign off on it, and that'll be that.
Let me talk to the Public Works Directors here right now.
I really don't want to deal with the Public Works.
We'll, I'll talk to him, and one of us will get back to you.
This is five times, five times.
Can I have your, and you don't have to give me it over now, but if you could give me your phone number?
Sure.
Just write it down for me, and give it, Attorney Wiki, Colin will get it to me, and then I'll, someone will call you tomorrow.
All right, okay. I would rather go outside of the city, because five times is more than enough.
I get it. I think the last time we went outside the city, if I remember right.
No, no. It was, you actually brought a city guy there, and it was terrible.
I'll talk with Public Works tomorrow, and just get me your number so I could call you tomorrow. Okay? So you want the pictures back, huh?
Well, I figured I'd let them all see how wonderful it is.
And I apologize for not getting back to an email. I usually get, I try to get back to all of them.
Yeah, the last time, the first time, you got back to me within a couple hours.
Yeah, I must have missed it.
I even said, if you don't get back to me, I'm going to come to the city council.
I obviously missed it, because I would have gotten back to you.
Like I said, I don't know why the city got involved with this. If the developer did it, it might have been better, although, I mean, you can't, anybody who's got a lawn knows you can't plant grass on rock.
Tom Ramlis, can you just get his number for me, please?
So we're all good?
Yeah, thank you.
Who am I giving to him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Patty Bowdoin. Did I get it right?
Close. My name is Patricia Bowdoin, or Patty Bowdoin. I live at 30 El Toro Drive in Bristol. I have some questions on some of the projects we've been trying to do over the last few years downtown and with the Boulevard. That school's been closed since 2012. We have two K-12 schools open, nothing going on at the Boulevard, and I understand that we've been working on it, but it shouldn't have, I don't think it should have taken five years to even attempt to come to a decision on it. The ceiling is collapsing inside and should have had some work done to repair it, and it's still sitting there doing nothing. That is one of the best auditoriums we have in town. I've performed in it. It has the best acoustics you could possibly have for a performing arts center, and I think we need to do something more with it. I also have questions with the mall site. That was torn down my junior year of high school. I've currently got a bachelor's and a master's, so it's been over six years. That was torn down in 2008, and I get, again, it takes time. Why has it taken so long to even attempt to try to break ground on anything? It's been almost 10 years. I just don't understand why it's been sitting there empty. There's nothing for anyone to do here, and people like me that are in their 20s, 30s, they're moving out because there's really nothing to do downtown besides, like, the Ice Cream Churn, Dunkin', Burger King, McDonald's. That's all we've got down here. We don't have anything for anyone at all in the city to do, and I just wanted to figure out what's going on with that, that we haven't made any progress.
Thank you. Edward Ducko.
You know, I usually try to crack you up.
Usually do.
Yeah, but I'm not going to do it today. I'm not really in that much of a mood to make any jokes today. Okay, Calvin Brown, thank you for your service. I know you're not going to run anymore. Mr. D'Amato, for not taking any kind of salary. I was thinking about this. You know, this city portrays itself as all heart, right? I saw in Bristol Roundup on their website, at the Southeast Business Park, they have a plaque there, you know, for the people who established it. All right. My mother's 92. She's been in the hospital for the last six days. I think if you could put up a plaque, and if you wanted to declare this city as all heart, you should, since that land was basically stolen from a family, you should put up a plaque there that says, "A special thank you to the Bubrin family. My Uncle Frank, my Uncle John, my mother, my Aunt Nellie."
We will talk about it. I'll talk to Justin at the BDA, and we'll discuss it at the BDA, and I think that's something.
I think that's only right.
I think that sounds good. We'll discuss it.
You couldn't run a $100,000 campaign, you know, for saying "all heart," but I'm telling you, if I really wanted to, I could tear that damn thing down with a couple of books of stamps, and Google 100 biggest newspapers in the country where, hey, when you've got a will and you've got time, you can get a lot of things accomplished. Oh, another thing, too, is my brother's always with the wetlands. Hey, look, I know there were wetlands there on that property on Middle Street, okay? I know there were. I mean, hey, I saw frogs, I saw ducks swimming on it. I saw, I thought it was a beaver. It was a muskrat, my father told me. And what do you want to do with it? You want to fill it in or something? I mean, it's on state maps, for Christ's sake. I tell you. All right, so what are you going to do? Are you going to get back to me?
We're going to discuss it at the BDA, and we will get back to you, yes.
I think that'd be the right thing to do.
Yes, we will.
You know, while she's still alive.
Yes, we will discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with your mother in the hospital.
Yeah, she's been there for six days. I'm heading there now.
Good luck.
92, no.
Announcement, starting my far left.
I do want to talk about giving blood again. I do this on a semi-regular basis. As the summer comes, people get very busy, and the blood supply does diminish, and there is a blood drive next week at St. Joseph's Church here in Bristol. That's Wednesday, the 21st, from 1:00 to 6:00, and you can check with the Red Cross. And like I said the last time I talked about giving blood, there is an app now so that you can sign in ahead of time and read all that material ahead of time for anybody that gives blood they know what that means, and it makes the process go a lot quicker. This weekend, we are starting a lot of our summer activities that we're known for here in Bristol. We have the Greek Festival going on this weekend, and we do have our annual Bill Engler Auto Show, that's hard to say, on North Main Street on Saturday. So that's a fun place, fun time to see lots of people besides the awesome vehicles that folks bring down to that event. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple, please. The Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce is holding their annual dinner this Thursday evening, and they're, they have a great slate of honorees, some very good longtime Bristol volunteers, that include our own John Smith, who was here a little while ago, Tom Morrow, John Latavico, Webster Bank, the Exchange Club of Bristol, and the Young Professional Visionaries of Tomorrow. So it should be a great, great event for the chamber. On the 29th, Mayor, you know this, you're going to lead the way. We have the State of the City scheduled at 8:00 on the 29th at Chippeney, where Mayor Kocane will represent Bristol, and the city leaders of Burlington, Farmington, Plymouth, Plainville, and Wilket will also attend and give us an update on their towns and cities. Tomorrow night, the Senior Center is honoring its volunteers at New Chiefs. They have a great corps of volunteers that make that place go, and on the 20th, the Brass and Wind Ensemble will play at the Senior Center under the direction of Rich Thirio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I've got something, just real quick. There is a new app that is available. The Bristol All Heart app is available for your phone now, if you have an Android or an iPhone. There were supposed to be some sheets that could follow the directions, but I don't see them out here, and I'm not going to give you the directions to, everyone knows how technologically advanced I am. But it's very simple. Obviously, if you want to find out what's going on in Bristol, it's great to just pick up your phone, click on the All Heart app, and it'll tell you exactly what's going on. There's so much more information on there. So it does work for Apple and Android platforms. It automatically appears when typing in BristolAllHeart.com in the browser, and you just follow the directions, and it's easy to do. So I'm sorry, I can't hand out these forms, but there were supposed to be these forms out there for you to follow. But just to make you aware, the Bristol All Heart app is available. So that's all I have.
Counselor?
Yeah, just a couple. I wanted to say the last day of school is next week, Wednesday, and I wanted to say congratulations to all the graduates and the teachers for surviving the year, and I want to say a Happy Father's Day to everybody out there who's going to be celebrating this coming Sunday.
Your Honor, a couple things. Counselwoman Fordy, you mentioned Bill Engler. I'm happy that you mentioned that. Just to piggyback off you a little bit, it would be something good to go to see his auto show. I've been friends with Bill Engler, you know, obviously, he is not longer with us, but since I was a little kid, and he was a great guy, and he's one of those few people that exist in the community that would do anything for this city. So I think that it's a great thing, and he loved nothing more than the city and classic cars. So anyone who can go, it would be a tribute to a great man, and his son Joe is turning into the same man that his father was. So I think it's important to mention Bill and his son Joe. The other thing is, the past couple weeks, I've had the opportunity to preside over two Eagle Courts of Honor, and I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned Ian Mace and Riley James McKenney, two fine individuals that received their Eagle Scout merit badge, and it was, it was a pleasure, because the city of Bristol was the only, you know, I was the only person that could go to some of them because of the budget season and everyone's schedule. So it was a great thing to go to. I, I'm really passionate about going to as many Eagle Scout Courts of Honor as I can. They're great people. It's a great organization, and it's a good thing for, you know, for young men to get involved, and it's a good thing for mothers and fathers to be involved as well. So I wouldn't see it fit without mentioning Ian Mace and Riley McKenney, and that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselman?
Yes, just a quick announcement to families, especially with young children. The Bristol Public Library in their Children's Department will be offering free lunches for students in the city of Bristol from June 19 through August 11. So that's at the Bristol Public Library in their Children's Department, and that's for children 0 to 18, frankly. So it's a great service that we're fortunate to have provided here in Bristol, and we thank the library for hosting that service for us. So for families and young children especially, just so you know. Also, I'd like to second what Councilwoman Zills Gagny said, and congratulate all of the students who will be graduating from the high schools this year, and then the younger students will be moving from middle school to high school. This is, this can be a stressful time, but it's also an exciting time, so congratulations to you, and thank you to all of Bristol's teachers for another year of incredibly hard work, with little thanks.
Thank you. I have a few. If you've gone by Bingham and Econno Schools, you'll see there's construction starting. There's fences around. They are starting the abatement that'll take about three months. Once the abatement's done, that's getting rid of all the asbestos and everything, they will, they will nearly move into construction, and it's expected to take about 18 months to receive, to be completed and receive a CO. So that, those two projects are moving along. I know we've been, all been waiting for that to happen, and it's finally happening. Man Ross Library next Friday, I believe it's the 23rd, at 9:00 AM, is having a kickoff reading day, 9:00 AM, and they're going to be having a pet contest. I've been asked to be one of the judges, so I'm looking forward to that, and I will be bringing my Golden Retriever Jack with me as a judge as well. So that'll be fun. And last but not least, we already talked about it, but I'll say it again, Glenn Clark, who's retiring after 19 years, Glenn? 19 years with the city of Bristol. I've learned a lot from Glenn. Glenn, you've been, been really, as a councilman and now mayor, it's been great working with you, sometimes working for you, and I appreciate it, all you've done to the city. You've brought us a triple A rating. You've brought our reserves way up, so I wish you fun in your retirement. Glenn's going to be heading off to Yellowstone, I think it is, to do some fishing in the summer, and then off to Florida in the winter. So I am jealous, and I'm sure we'll be keeping in touch. Good luck, Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's all I have on that. Item number five.
Consent calendar, and there are eight items. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for May 2017. 5B is to approve the tax refunds dated June 5, 2017. 5C is to approve a hold harmless and indemnification agreement and covenant not to sue by and between the city and Harwinton Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, and authorization for the mayor to execute. 5D is to approve the community access channel use agreement by and between the city and Nutmeg Public Access Television Incorporated, and authorization for the mayor to execute. 5E is to approve the regional emergency medical services communications system agreement between the city and North Central Connecticut Emergency Medical Services Council Incorporated, and authorization for the mayor to execute. 5F is to place on file the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the capital improvement budget fiscal year 2017, 2018, as the projects are consistent with the goals of the plan of conservation and development. 5G is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all local and state applications and permits required to construct a parking lot at the corner of Park Street and Muzzy Street, and 5H is to accept the West Bristol School Building Project located at 500 Clark Avenue Bristol as complete, and file the final paperwork with the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Division of Construction Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main, seconded. Discussion.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
I just have a question on letter G. Is Walt, Walt, can I ask, the parking lot at the corner of Muzzy and Park, now, is this the property that the park board recently purchased, or is that something else?
That's part of that property, yes.
Okay, so we're going to be knocking that house down and building a parking lot? Is that what this is?
Well, there'll be a parking lot constructed in the future. Right now, there's no funding for it, so we're in the design, but we'll be filing for the permitting, so that's the applicant, getting the permission to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Yes, I had a question on D. That's the Nutmeg contract that we have. I, in reading through the contract, I saw provision for us to buy copies of the tapes that they make, and I'm just wondering if we do that.
We do get a copy every month from the council meetings. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, and that copy is stored where, in the mayor's office?
The mayor's office, the mayor's office gets it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes. Item number six.
It's committee reports, the approval of lease agreement between the city and Central Connecticut Rehab Medical Group PC for 11 Bellevue Avenue.
I'll read that.
Go ahead, please.
I hereby move the city of Bristol approved lease agreement by and between the city of Bristol, the landlord, and Central Connecticut Rehab Medical Group PC, the tenant, for portion of the property located at Bristol Youth Services Complex, 11 Bellevue Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of two years, commencing July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. The total run paid, total rent paid by the tenant shall be $15,614.85 per year, or $1,301.23 per month, for each month beginning July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, which is based on the rental of 1,200 square feet at 13.01237 cents per square foot. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $15,577.99 per year, $1,314.24 per month, each month beginning July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, which is based on the rental of 1,200 square feet at 13.142.49 cents per square foot. I further move that this matter be referred to the preparation council to prepare and to review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the sale.
One second.
Second.
Motion main, seconded. Counselman, next time, we're going to try to make that a little longer for you.
Yeah, would you please add a few more dollars and cents, a few more?
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Other committee reports, starting my far left.
None for me.
I have a couple, Mayor. For the BDA, Justin Mallon and I are working on a possible grant program that's designed to complement some existing programs that already exist for developers. As you all know, if a developer wants to construct property or renew property within our enterprise zone, which includes Center Square and some of the contiguous areas around Center Square, we have a tax abatement program that exists. This program is designed to help already successful businesses, either hopefully in Bristol, or maybe even in other towns, get to the next level of their business development. And what we hope to do is target certain businesses that may want to move to Bristol or move downtown. And we're focusing on Center Square, of course, but Main, Lower Main, North Main, School Street, and Riverside Avenues. Hopefully, we'll have more, meeting with Justin next week, and maybe hopefully we'll have more for the BDA Board and the, and the council next month. For the Downtown Committee, Malone McBroom is working on the application to resubdivide the rest of Center Square. Our goal is to have a workable subdivision plan and parcels, which will provide other developers both flexibility and various sizes for different types of usages for downtown. We're trying to maximize the value there by responsibly trying to subdivide the parcel. Justin wanted me to tell you that the Farmer's Market will begin June 24 in Center Square, and that Startup Bristol is, I think this is the second year, Mayor? Yes. Second year? Yes. Of, of that program has whittled down, that committee has whittled down 11 new startups in their round, round two, that they're going through more of their investigations and questionings, and they'll hopefully have the finals by the end of, the end of July. There is no ordinance committee meeting last month, but we will meet this week. We have a, this month, we have a busy agenda, and what I want, the last thing I want to talk about, Mayor, is the fire department. I think you might have been at the meeting, but something great happened at our last fire board. Three members of the fire department were recognized for bravery. Captain James Plaster, firefighter Donald Peralt, and firefighter Derek Fremuth. On April 17, they entered a house fire in the area of Topsfield and On April 17th, they entered a house fire in the area of Topsfield and Salem Roads. An elderly woman was trapped inside, and the firemen entered a burning building without hose, this is probably a fire term, Jay and I messed it up, probably, fire line protection, fire hose protection? They went cold, right? They didn't have everything, all of their protections. And they pulled the woman to safety. So they were honored for bravery, their dedication, and the high standard that we're trying to get with what we do have with our fire department. So those three people, if you see them, congratulate them. They're brave men, and they did a great job for the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I have nothing.
Counselor.
Couple things from the Parks Department. The Summer Fun Camp begins on June 26th, as does our new park superintendent, so we're all looking forward to him starting. Also, the Summer Concert Series is at Rockwell Park. It begins Tuesday, June 27th, and goes every Tuesday except the Fourth of July until August 22nd. It's from 7:00 to 8:30 at Rockwell Park. There's a lot of good bands, and it's always a lot of fun. And finally, the MBS Building Committee finally had a meeting again this past month. Our last one was in January. It was very well attended. It's being proposed to go forward with the Cultural Center and the Theater, which is Phase One of the project, but the proposal was for only a 500-seat theater. There was a lot of discussion on this, and we are not finished yet. We meet again on next Wednesday, June 21st, with questions that we will have for the architect and the construction manager.
Counselor.
None, Your Honor.
None.
And chair has none. Item number, unfinished business, starting my far right.
None for me.
None, Your Honor.
None.
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 I do have some. I was wondering if our personnel director could come up.
Hi, Mary.
I'm bringing up a couple of positions that are still vacant, at least to my understanding they are. I know in our sewer department, the, and I don't know his title exactly, whether it's the director or the supervisor of the sewer department left in the first half of April. And at that time, we had made an offer to someone, and their current employer gave them additional incentives to stay with them. And at that time, my understanding was that you were going to go to the salary committee to try and get that position upgraded, and I'm just wondering if salary has been able to meet, if there's any update on that.
I did write a letter to the mayor requesting that upgrade, and the salary committee meeting is pending.
Okay. Do you know the date of that?
We were trying to shoot for next Tuesday, but I'm not sure if that's going to be enough notice, so it may be postponed.
Okay. And in Public Works, we have the, I guess I saw David Clark's name on the new hire report, and obviously, he has left, you know, his permanent job here. He's been the supervisor of solid waste, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we had someone hired, and they left after a very short time. So is Mr. Clark back on a part-time basis or a full-time basis?
He's back temporarily, and we have an offer pending to replace him.
Okay. Do we have any idea?
I don't have a start date yet, but the offer is pending.
Okay.
And it's been accepted, actually. I just don't have a start date.
And then, all right. And there, is that, is there a plan to upgrade that position at all?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. I think there, I guess I'll just say that I think there have been about five or six salary upgrades for this particular bargaining unit that all those folks are in since I've been on the council. Are you giving any more thought to a job study for that bargaining unit, for the supervisors?
Well, I think it's been discussed many times over. You're probably familiar with some of those conversations. We've discussed it with the union leadership. We haven't come to terms on what that job study would be, and the only thing I can say is we're still talking about it.
Have there been recent, you know, I guess based on these positions, have there been any recent talks about that?
We had a discussion with the union, I couldn't give you the date, before the budget was approved, when a significant mill increase was pending, and we told them we'd have to bring up discussions following the adoption of the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Counselor one?
No.
Okay. New business, starting my far right.
No new business for me.
None, Your Honor.
None.
None, Your Honor?
None.
None.
Resignations.
There are three resignations. The first is from Helen Loboshevsky from the Commission on Aging. The second is from Sue Calp Moreau from the Bristol School Readiness Council. And the last one is from Sam Alkus from the Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thanks.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Appointments. Commission for Persons with Disabilities to reappoint Robert Smith, three-year term to 6/20. To reappoint Greg Klemic, three-year term to 6/20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption to reappoint Jennifer Andrukhovitz, Section 2-9 resignation, no term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Plainville Area Cable Television Eversire Council to reappoint Teresa Barton, two-year term to 6/19. To reappoint Linda Jocinski, two-year term to 6/19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. School Readiness Council to appoint Erica Coleman to replace Susan Calp Moreau. Dr. Moreau's resignation, unexpired term to 8/18, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Zoning Commission to reappoint Luis Provenzano, three-year term to 6/20. To reappoint Peter Delmaschio, term to 6/20. To reappoint Michael Mazrally, alternate member, term to 6/20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Board of Finance, before we go on, Cheryl, would you mind coming up to the podium, please? Cheryl's up for reappointment this month. Cheryl is currently the chairwoman of the Board of Finance, serving her second as chairwoman, I believe. And she's also a council candidate, so I just want to ask you, if you are fortunate enough to win your council seat, will you resign from the chairman, from the Board of Finance?
Yes, I would. Not only would that be my desire, so that I could fulfill the obligations of a council member, but it's also required by the city charter that I would.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board of Finance to reappoint Cheryl Thibodeau. Thibodeau, Thibodeau, and I know that, Thibodeau. She's going to smack me, four-year term to 6/21.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Your, Mayor? Yep. You know, I want to make public record of this, that I talked to the mayor about this, and I also called Mrs. Thibodeau. You know, we always try to make sure that if we have a discussion item during this meeting, that we give people heads up. So, you know, and I want everyone to understand that. I think it's important that we lay things out on the table for one another, so that there's no surprises, that there's honest dialogue among all of us. And I have to tell you, we, I admire, and all the volunteers on the Board of Finance. This year, they had a very difficult task, and Cheryl and I had a conversation today, and I told her that I respect what she does, and I respect the time she puts in. When you lead this stuff, you've got to be prepared, you've got to spend a lot of time. But when she announced, when she announced for the council seat, you know, and I said this to the mayor, I said, you know, I think rather than reappoint her, we should let her stay on. You don't have to reappoint her, she can sit and stay and fulfill her duties. And I thought that, now this is one person's opinion, one representative's opinion, that that would be the appropriate way to go. The mayor and I disagree on that. But I want to make it public that we talked about it in advance, and that Cheryl knows what we talked about, and the mayor knows about my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would just like to fully associate myself with the comments from Mr. Proleski. I think I would feel much more comfortable if we could just not take up a vote on this and let things go through the election, so that we aren't in a position to have to vote no.
Any other discussion? So let me say that I've served with Cheryl as mayor on the Board of Finance. I find her to be the utmost honest person that I probably have ever met. And I find it disappointing that politics has brought into this position. Someone is good enough to serve on a month-to-month basis, but not good enough to serve being appointed. That is purely political, and that's all you're bringing this into, and I think it's pretty disgusting that you would do that. So that being said, roll call, starting my far right.
No.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Cheryl, congratulations, and I apologize. Second Board of Finance to appoint Kimberly Havel, I got that name right, right? CPA, to replace Orlando Caffey, four-year term to 6/21. I have a motion.
So moved.
I have a second. No second. Hearing no second, motion fails. Again, Kimberly, I apologize for this council. This again is purely political, and we will look to get you on another board. And thank you for putting your name in the thing. I think your resume was outstanding. You would have been a very great asset to this Board of Finance, and it's, again, disgusting that politics has brought into this. Mayor, through the chair? Go ahead. You know, to blame this on politics is absolutely wrong. It's absolutely wrong. Five members of your council gave you advanced notice that we thought that Mr. Caffey did a wonderful job, he was always well-prepared, always gave us advanced questions. He went above and beyond in preparing for these Board of Finance meetings. I've had many discussions with him. This is not about Ms. Havel. We talked about this last week before. We didn't get anything from your office until 4:30 last night, Mayor, about anything about her. And this is, this is not a slight in any way, shape, or form. Your resume is outstanding. We hope that you stay involved, that you'll, we need young professionals like you to contribute to our city. We have a lot of openings and a lot of boards, and there'll probably be more opportunities on the Board of Finance. But this is not about slighting you in any way, shape, or form. And that's from my heart, I want you to know that. And it's not politics, Mayor, it's objectivity that you don't understand sometimes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Again, I'd like to kind of reiterate some of the things that Dave said. I've read your resume, obviously, it's an outstanding resume. Certainly, you deserve to be on the Board of Finance, and maybe the opportunity will present itself, especially if we get an election in the fall that's, that might go that way. I did express my feeling about Orlando also, that in my opinion, he was well-prepared, did an excellent job, was trying to be involved very much in the Board of Finance, and it was disappointing that he was getting replaced. We asked for reasoning, and the reasoning was that we wanted to go in another direction, which is your prerogative. But I just want you to know that that had nothing to do with you. Certainly, you are well-qualified and deserve to be on any board that you want to be aboard. And please, stay involved, so please don't take this personally that we're in any way slighting you.
Your Honor, I would like to also second the comments of Mr. Mills and Mr. Proleski, and thank Ms. Havel for her interest in serving on a board and for her strong qualifications. And I would also like to say that I think it's ironic you would accuse this board of being political when it's a bipartisan consensus that it is just simply bad practice to refuse to reappoint another qualified person who wants to be reappointed to a board, simply because sometimes that person doesn't agree with your agenda, Mr. Mayor. And I think, as Mr. Mills points out, while it is technically your prerogative to make a change and try to appoint other people to boards, it's also our prerogative to prevent you from doing that. And I think you need to learn that lesson. And I'm glad that tonight, that opportunity has finally presented itself.
I would also like to reiterate the comments from Attorney Proleski, or Counselman Proleski, sorry. It's nothing personal, and thank you for putting your hat in the ring. I just, I don't even know what political party Orlando is signed up with. I just think he comes prepared for every meeting, and he comes and gives us his all, he gives us emails, I think, and he deserves another chance.
And, Your Honor, if I can make a comment just for the record, so the audience knows that at the end of the day, and this was partly my fault, because I didn't check my city email account until later in the day after this morning, I wanted to make it a point to make sure that Orlando can get his resume in, so it can be compared against Ms. Havel's. So although I planned on voting for Ms. Havel, that's neither here nor there, I wanted to make sure that Orlando had the opportunity to get his resume in there, were able to look at both of them, and that was my prerogative as a business decision, and, you know, I guess the entire council has made its decision, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it's known that I tried to make the playing field a little fairer, I guess, and give Orlando a shot, because he's a good guy and he deserves a shot. Other than that, you know, that was going to be my vote, but that's neither here nor there. Appreciate it.
So let me just say, and then we'll move on, that I find it ironic that the people who say he came most prepared never attended a Board of Finance meeting. There was only one councilwoman that attended, I think, every budget hearing, and I commend you, Councilwoman Fordy, I commend you on that. A few other councilpeople attended, maybe a couple budget hearings, and I'll just leave it at that. Item number 11.
To approve the mechanical upgrades and change order as recommended by Silver Petroselli and Associates for $20,600 for design and construction administration for mechanical upgrades for Hubble School Roof Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding approval of list of program applications to obtain benefits under the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program, and there is a resolution to read.
I can read that, Your Honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the list of program applications as approved by the Bristol Development Authority on May 22nd, 2017, to obtain benefits under the Neighborhood Assistance Tax Credit Program is hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is authorized to submit such applications and any and all other documents relating to the Neighborhood Assistance Act to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion, resolution, second.
Second.
Resolu, is that a motion or a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Starting my, roll call, starting my far right.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 13.
Approval to enter into agreement for collection of soft recyclables between the City of Bristol and Great Lakes Recycling Incorporated, doing business as Simple Recycling, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item number 14.
Award of Contract 2C17104 Video Detection Traffic Signal Upgrades to Paramount Construction LLC for $399,605.45, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary, including State of Connecticut Lot, SIP, Grant, and referral to Corporation Council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item number 15.
Resolution regarding approval to file grant application for tempered glass transom-type windows in police communications for a State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of statewide emergency telecommunications grant, and there is a resolution to read.
I can read it. Be it hereby resolved that the filing of an application for the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and the Public Protection Division of statewide emergency telecommunications grant is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth Beecockine, or acting mayor, and the chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this funding slash grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash grant documents, and that the previous execution and filing of said application by the chief of police are hereby ratified. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Resolution, starting my far right, roll call.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 16.
Resolution regarding approval to file grant application to Thomaston Savings Bank Foundation for $1,500 to support purchase of granite markers by the City Cemetery Commission, and there is a resolution to read.
I can read that.
Okay.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to Thomaston Savings Bank Foundation for $1,500 to support the purchase of granite markers by the City Cemetery Commission is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth Beecockine, or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this program, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Resolution, starting my far left.[1684.12]
Yes.
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 Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 17.
Approval of change order to Contract 2C1797 Design/Build Post-Tension Concrete Tennis Courts at Bristol Schools with Classic Turf Company LLC for $165,393, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Mayor, this is on the 10-year capital plan, right?
I believe it was.
Which, which, which schools are we doing, both of them?
Eastern.
Eastern and Central, both of the high schools?
Both of them.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just, if I may, if you want an example of them, I think they put them at Page Park.
Correct.
Those are the tennis courts that are there, so if you want to know what they look like, it's a new type of composite that's there. They really look very nice, so I think it'll be a nice addition.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 18.
Award of Contract 2C17126 Rooftop HVAC Replacement for Chippens Hill Middle School to Save More Heating and Cooling Incorporated for $1,028,500, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all necessary documents, or any documents necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, could you just, could Tim just come up and explain? This is just for the AC? Okay.
We're looking at...
Replacing the rooftop units on Chippens Hill, much like we did on the Hubble School project while we're doing the roof projects, we like to consolidate the roof work, all the rooftop units, along with the roof. Currently, we are under budget on both projects, and this, this will enable us to move forward with that project, so this is the bid that actually came in from Save More.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 19.
Resolution regarding approval of mayor's economic development assistance grant for $77,088, which includes $7,000 for job creation, to Integra Cast Incorporated.
Your Honor, I have to recuse myself, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And there is a resolution to read.
Someone here to read?
I'll read it. I'll wait until Tony leaves. Be it hereby resolved by the Bristol City Council to provide a mayor's economic grant assistant, or development assistant grant in the amount of up to $77,088, which includes up to $7,000 for job creation, to Integra Cast Inc., for purposes of reimbursing 5% of the cost of eligible new manufacturing equipment and installation associated with the company's new Bristol location, subject to normal provisions. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, I don't, is Mr. Malley here tonight?
No, he's not. He sent the council an email.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Is there anybody, I'm just curious about this language, which includes $7,000 for job creation. What are the metrics on that? How is that measured? Is anybody that can speak to that?
They take a snapshot of where they are today, and then, once a year, at a specific date, they call the company, say how many employees you have, look at the books. If they have Bristol residents, they get $1,000 per employee. If they have non-Bristol residents, they get $750 per employee.
Okay.